Could we have everyone please rise for the flag and then keep standing for the legislative statement? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Salamaka City Central School District now is the homeland of the Anaduaga people of the great hills, the Seneca people on those and whose ancestral and modern day land Salamaka School District now stands, whose water we enjoy. We stand with indigenous peoples and their result to remain connected to their land. While we cannot undo what has been done, it is the goal of the Salamaka City Central School District to recognize the history and make improvements that will benefit the next seven generations of indigenous students.
Thank you. Dr. Bealer will be remoting in. So do you have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, we do, actually. Thank you. I'm a little under the weather and want to ensure that when we're not feeling well, we stay away from close contact. We added the Create a Food Service Helper Substitute Resolution. We added a certification of uncollected school taxes and tax collectors audit. We added the figures into the resolution. We revised a step typo on Suzie Thompson's appointment. We removed the wording pending fingerprint clearance because fingerprints clearance was received for Amanda Hearn, who was an in tandem worker. And then we added several items to the Board of Information, including November 10th, which is this Thursday for Veterans Day Breakfast and Assembly at 7:30. November 14th to 18th is honoring Indigenous Peoples Week. December 8th through 10th is Salamaka Drama Club production of Elf. December 13th is our high school and band chorus concert. The 15th of December is our Seneca Band Chorus Concert. December 21st is our first grade concert. December 23rd is our tapping ceremony for the National Irish Society. And the last one is that we move the executive session from the end of the agenda to after the presentations for the purpose of personnel.
Okay, very good. Then I need a motion to approve the agenda with the changes.
Motion.
Motion by Carrie, second by Flip. Are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried. And agree as our presentation. So first of all, we have Prospect and Seneca Team Leaders.
I'm Chris Mars. I'm a social worker at Prospect. I also run leadership teams, grades three through seven. So this is a pretty good portion of our team. We have quite a few kids that were not able to make it tonight because of other obligations. But we wanted to bring in some of the members that were able to make it so that you could see their faces and know who they are. This team has really surprised me this year. This is our 10th year of having a third grade leaders team. A lot of the kids on the fourth, fifth, sixth, and seventh grade team were on the third grade leaders team when they were at Prospect. So that's pretty cool. They've really done a lot of cool things already. They did the Make the Difference Day. On a Saturday morning, we were able to clean up around the park, the parking lots and the school grounds. They've also had a Thanksgiving food drive coming up at Prospect. Desserts for December drive at Seneca that they're going to donate all of those things to the local food pantry. So we have some pretty cool ideas and different things that are coming up. And I think you all have a copy of kind of an agenda over the next, over actually for the year. We'll be adding more things to that, but that was just a preliminary type of thing. So we're going to start with the end. I know we'll get to you. And we're just gonna kind of go one by one and let them introduce themselves to you. Alright, so like I said, we do have a handful of kids that were not able to be here tonight because of travel across teams and some other things that came up. But this is a good majority. I think we had 13 that were able to be here tonight. You know, I just, these kids really are putting forth their best effort and really just showing up and working hard and doing a lot of team building and getting to know each other and working together as a team. I want to give props to a lot of our Seneca kids who came over to Prospect. All of the, all of the third grade leaders team were greeters during open house. We had older siblings that are on the Seneca team that had Prospect's younger siblings who came over and they helped be greeters at the door and be able, you know, they took families to different classrooms. And so they're really showing up, you know, and I think we have a lot of kids that have bright futures ahead of them and they're really representing our district extraordinarily well. So I just wanted to give them props and I'm so proud of all of them. And I just wanted to share that with all of you and thank the parents that feed and are supporting them, have their stuff in the way too, so.
Thank you. Next, we have our MTSS Plan presentation.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
My charge is to, I'm gonna take note about 5:39 here. Bring about 40 pages of document into a 15-minute presentation or fewer. Better than Lens Crafters. So let's see how we do. So first, we have chunks of this plan that I'll go through, the introduction, defining where we are and where we're moving to, guiding principles, essential components, our four MTSS questions, the role of assessments, what's new and improved, which will be my favorite part, and the last page of the presentation, and behavioral and SEL for social emotional learning will be looked in there. So to start, we begin with these arrows. For Flip and Tad, who are new, I'm gonna kind of do a very quick introduction so that you can understand where we are and then take you very quickly to where we're going. So these arrows at the bottom, that's the mystery that we're going to solve by the end of this particular slide, starting with for many years, a couple decades, actually, we've had response to intervention. And that focused on academic support. We considered the notion of tiered supports, tier one, tier two, and three. The use of data to help solve problems and behavioral considerations were part of it. The tiers, if I were just to put simply, tier one is about all kids. They come in, what do all kids get? Tier two is about what some kids need, usually around a common area of need. And then tier three is individualized or intensive. So we've typically had that here at Salamaka and it is connected to a New York State regulation. So this plan in some ways serves as the proxy for us meeting that academic intervention services regulation, but way more. And today, someone was visiting, our PD offered to our interventionist today and wrote me an email and said that what we're doing is cutting edge and that other districts in the region are looking to us, and that is true. So much so that 10 other districts are looking at our plan as a way to guide how they're moving forward. Love the idea that Salamaka would be a thought leader in the region and we're able to do that. So then that leads me to, so what's so great about this plan? The multi-tiered system of support looks at the arrows, that relationship between tiered support, multiple data points, but more importantly, behavior, behavior, social emotional wellness, attendance, and the effect it has on academics. So a few weeks ago, Tiffany and her team presented something around attendance. That is part of MTSS, the very bottom. It is the base of the pyramid. Kids aren't here, we can't support them. So props to them for the excellent plan that feeds what we need to have happen so that kids are here. So what's really important is MTSS has started to happen across the nation. Or the creation of this plan from an RTI because it really highlights that reciprocal relationship between behavior, SEL, attendance, academic success. However, what 20 years of neuroscience will tell us is that emotions are the letters for learning. Sometimes we've been in a place where we have thought that learning just happens, but actually it's guided negatively or positively around the emotions and the learning of coming into that space and learning. That's powerful. Because sometimes when we talk about soft skills, we treat that as, oh, relationships are fluff. They're not really important. They're absolutely critical. Because when a student walks into a space and is expected to learn, that space needs to be conducive to learning and how that is created can break or make what happens. And that emotion is very critical. That's been a shift. Sometimes our logical thinkers are just learning. Suck it up, move it through it. Motion might get you, might get in the way. So our current state is, we have had RTI in the past, but what I want to point out about RTI, response to intervention, response to intervention is decidedly somewhat negative. It's about skill deficits. It's about students who struggle. And that was the entire focus. And it didn't include necessarily a program that you brought me in to develop, which is gifted and talented. RTI is about students who struggle, not for students who excel. So that's a very important program that we're building slowly here. But part of this, last year was making sure that we were clear about the model and MTSS would allow us to do that. Moreover, CHANCE, which is a positive behavior system, we had it, but before COVID, you know, it was starting to grow. COVID happens and then a lot of things tanked. Why? Because of the SEL part of students being home, struggling, working through a pandemic, and then coming back to school. So the idea that MTSS would be that umbrella for all of those things is really important. So our MTSS Plan integrates what we know about RTI and a system of prevention and intervention. It enhances what we've done in the past, but it also expands what we do to include more of that SEL piece and that it integrates gifted and talented. So that's the quick update for Ted and Flip, and I hope that I brought you in. And then I bring in the notion of ry. Ry focuses on equity. Are we doing all that we can to get students what they need? And we want to make sure that they're not falling through the cracks. As we met this summer to look at where we were shifting, that was something that was brought up by all the teams, K-12. As we move forward, this is actually probably now a copyrighted pyramid. This is Salamaka's own. And what this highlights is what MTSS is and what it's not. So on the left-hand side, our model is different than a lot of other models in that we see general education as being important here and it's both tier one and two. So all students and some students are served by our model and this happens in the classroom setting. Everything in the red is the school-wide efforts. So we join in with what's happening individual in classrooms, but then also what's happening school-wide. The other thing is RTI, when it was first introduced somewhere around the mid 2000s, it was also introduced through special ed. And it shaped the perceptions, so much so that sometimes people think that there's a fourth tier. Meaning that when you go through these supports, I'm in a classroom and then I need small group help and then I might need some intensive one-on-one support. Some people sometimes think that this fourth one is special ed. With our model and generally with a research-based model, students can have an IUP and still be in general education settings, still get small group support, still get intensive help. They're all our children. So the idea is not that we're getting them out of the classroom, but we get them the support they need and then they're brought back into the community. So it is possible that a student could have an IP and have all three forms of support through this system. It also includes exceptional, so that could be true also for gifted and talented. And again, it moves from being more whole group and everybody to individual students, depending on what they need, which is a very important focus. What I also want to say in redefining MTSS here, what we've discovered is sometimes it becomes an or, meaning that a student might get tier one support, they might go and get tier two support. And then what happens is, in many districts, including this, it's been Salamaka the past year, it would be, well, tier two didn't work, so now they're gonna go to tier three. When in fact, a true tiered model would be, they would get every level of support. It's not an either or, it's not a tier two or a tier three. It could be all three tiers. Because those three tiers may be important in terms of time, the intensive one-on-one support, the repetition that they need. So I always say, we embrace the genius of and here and not either or. The other thing is that the tiers describe the support, not the student. Although sometimes you'll hear tier two students, but I tend to say, let's not do that. Because there may be a student who is getting tier three support in math, tier two support in literacy, and tier one support somewhere else. So the tiers do not define the student, it defines the support. And then lastly, a shift that's been important here is focusing on the fidelity to student learning, not a program. So imagine if you come and you need some particular support, I'm going to think of the program that is, is most appropriate to your need rather than just giving you a program and going from start to finish. So in the end, when we do tier support well, 80% of our students will be served by the most basic tier, which is tier one. And then when we add tier two, which has been a decided focus this year, up to 95% of students can be served just by that tier, those two levels of support alone. That's the goal. There's been part of discussion post-COVID that our house looks a little less like a triangle and more like a house. That tier one and tier two are almost parallel. We're dismantling that house right now and we're doing really good things to make it more like a pyramid. So as I bring in these three ideas, the idea that all three supports could be needed by a student, but if I'm going to say that there's a formula, tier one is whole class core differentiated instruction. And Penny Beatty works very, very hard with her coaches along with the building principals to ensure that that happens. Tier two is our area this year. It's been somewhat a newer idea because we weren't necessarily following it as an and. So we're changing that, we're redefining that, and we've done some things that I'll report on the last slide that have been particularly exciting. And tier three would be, take tier one, take tier two, and then tier three is more of that intensive one-on-one support. In an elementary setting, it could be three to five students, but it should be highly individualized. And it's appropriate to be five to eight students in a high school setting, as long as we can provide students on an individual basis what they need. Guiding principles, I just wanted to say, a key point would be bullet one, that MTSS is for all students, not only those who may be struggling. Our goal is tier one, it's 80% of our students at the minimum, that we use reliable assessments, which will be in a couple slides to come, and that we're using problem-solving protocols that get at root causes and thoughtfully align whatever we're coming up as a solution to what the problem is. Data guides are essential decisions. And the last one is one that's overlooked. The adults are also supported by tiers. If adults may be struggling with SEL, they may be provided in tier three and there have been things that generally have been brought in. Alright, I'm gonna go a bit out of order here and I'll tell a story. First off, I'm just gonna explain an example to make this all clear of how these pieces fit. I have a leak in my house in the basement when I bought my house, but I didn't know it. I had a home inspector who is my tier one support, the universal that's provided every homeowner. Home inspector comes in, takes a look, says, yeah, no, that's not a problem. No, that's not a problem. So my universal screener came in, my home inspector said there was not a leak, but I've already foreshadowed there was. Flashword, every time it rains, there's a leak and that ceiling is getting bushier as it goes. I bring in a handyman, who I might describe as an interventionist, comes in, takes a look and he says, yeah, it's your roof. It goes straight up and when the wind blows, the rain must be going sideways and it's coming down and that's why you have a roof. That's what I thought. We had it repaired, put a new piece, a cut-out piece of drywall in there, muddied it in, and then we monitor. I monitored to see if the leak went away, because that's what we do with tiered supports. Well, it didn't. Didn't. We didn't do very good root cause analysis this year. And my interventionist was off. Handyman number three came in just about a month ago, came in and ultimately died, decided that the leak was from my sink directly above. And all it was, was it like, you know, that U joint thing had to be screwed. It was loose. It had been loose for the last three years. Every time anybody used that guest bathroom, the water leaked down, created the lake. And now I'm progress monitoring. Now I've got a tier three. Progress monitoring and the leak so far has not returned. That's tiered support in a nutshell. And what we seek to do here at Salamaka is be like my third handyman. Make sure we get the root cause analysis right. We have a good way to assess and we take care of the problem. So that I go back to a normal home, which would be tier one. These assessments, as you look at the plan, there are many things that are highlighted that are new. I want to thank the district for funding all the new assessments that we have placed in, including two new assessments for gifted and talented education. One is a universal screener and one we can use for tier two. And then this is the most important chart of all. So we are experimenting with some models around tier two K5, where teachers are, interventionists are pushing into classrooms to provide support in the classroom so that students can get immediate support. We also have the Center for All, which stands for All Learners in Learning. Sometimes Lacey Hill will say Academic Learners in Learning. It works. And I'm going to give you words directly from them at the very end for feedback. Win time is what I need time. We're refashioning that. We're still learning how to do that well, but in effect, that should be tier three for all students where they can work individually. It stands for what I need and it should be what I, as an individual, need. Behavior, we've reignited the use of CHANCE, thanks to Mr. Long, still here. He's one of the trainers. And we've introduced restorative practices, which you know have roots in indigenous cultures. And changes our mindset about how we approach discipline. And then we have the social emotional learning and wellbeing that's also added and addressed through restorative practices plus some other programs identified in the plan. This is where I'd like to close with some feedback, turning a little bit up in front of my own time, but I'm aware of it. First, I'd like to report out what interventionists are seeing at Prospect. They're seeing students who were getting tier two services, returning back to the classroom, not needing more support. That means we're being effective. There's flexibility in conversations around kids and how they get the support they need. And then interventionists feel themselves that they've been supported through the process. And they thank you for bringing me in as the point person. They have a person they can come to and who represents. So shout out to Lori Hensel, who is our building coordinator, Angel Piggly, Kristen Camarano, Nicole Isler, Minnie Schrader, Paul Andradejuski, Marissa Shields, Anne Marie Anderson, and Alicia Long. They also shared that more students are being seen in better matched groups. There's more efficient tier two and tier three support, better data tracking, and they're seeing success. And there are two more quotes, happy kids. Kids are excited to work on skills in small group and excited about their growth. And then closing with Prospect, there's a powerful sense of hope this year because we have clearly outlined goals and plans. For Seneca, they're seeing that they're thinking we've added a fourth grade reading specialist, bless you, and math specialist to help keep smaller groups taking, and that we're taking more students for intervention. They're thankful for the new assessments and screeners and the inclusion of the address of attendance and behavior. The referral plan is solid and consistent. They enjoy meeting. I can't believe it, every two weeks with me. But you know, I am a little fun. And they're seeing progress around student learning and they appreciate collaboration across the board, with each other, across buildings, et cetera. Thanks to Elise Siawski, who will be exiting, and tonight you'll be approving our new building coordinator for Seneca. I would also like to thank Jen Tyra, Kelly Carlson, Molly Bligh, Eric Shippka, Chad Baldwin, Porsha Land, and Heidi Kimison. Amy Crowley's at the high school and she just said, well, I would say it was good that we're all able to get together this summer and yet again today. And she said, let's do this more. A few positives that come to mind, we are all using the same sorts of forms. And the Center for All has helped a few kids get their grades up to passing. We're incorporating students' voice into the meetings and having more conversations with parents, smaller groups, collaboration. And then last is our newly introduced Center for All. Oh, and let's see. Yeah, we got Amy, but I'll be bringing up the, oh, and Amy, the intervention at the high school, we also, Mindy John and Amanda Bevia. Center for All, Lacey Hill's providing that up. That's new. Wanting to give props to Chris for being a partner in this. And this particular place is really seeing movement around the SEL. that this particular place is really seeing movement around the SEL and behavior piece. Normally we we focus on academic, but the Center for All is a place where kids can go and let's, I think our biggest problems right now, our kids are not doing more. Like they need someone, an adult there to stay on them in a positive way and encourage them to get the work completed. Jen Hawkins is one of those interventionists and she said her highlight of today was that a student went from a zero of doing nothing and now earning a seventy-eight in math. One student, but everybody, every one of these interventionists are touching many students' lives. So even though I give one example, there are many examples that are contained with all the folks here. Jen Hawkins, Rich Ward, or Rich Wades, Disney Rich, Adam Bennett, and then Lacy Hill. And Lacy Hill's shared as a coordinator, this is her quote, I've had time to meet with grade level teams, assist with referrals. And as we monitor the Center for All, we're seeing students and their grades improve, parents and guardians have become optimistic and supportive of the additional support. And teachers are finding it helpful. Students are getting missed and late assignments, completed grades are improving and students want to be in the Center for All. Those assigned are coming to ask more often than what they're assigned and students who aren't assigned are coming in to ask for support. That's what we want. They want to come to us. We don't necessarily have to come to them. And as Rich Wade closed today, he said more students are on track to graduate as a result of being able to come into the Center for All, get their get their support and get their work done. So with that, I want to say thank you for your support. We're going to continue to rock it out. Brad, I know last year you said tier support, amazing things will happen. We're making those amazing things happen. There's more to come. And we just really want to thank you for all that you've done to support our program. Any question?
Thank you.
Thank you for the time. And next we have our crisis plan presentations.
What did you do for all your site? You have a great presentation on your crisis plan. As Chris will touch briefly, the district has been using my plan as two thousand thirteen fifteen. However, since COVID, you know, we wanted to come back together and give ourselves an opportunity to revamp the plan with change. Changes within the district as well as protocols, ultimately to reduce the amount of long-term trauma following a crisis. So we'll kind of kick it off, run through a few different areas. Getting us some brief details about how the structure is actually aligned in terms of roles and responsibilities. And then get into more details about post-trauma and mitigating that as much as possible.
Right. Um, so as you can see, our team has been working side by side with Mr. Ray Haley and with safety team on ensuring that our plans are working smoothly together. There's been a lot of changes on both sides, so just making sure that those plans correlate with one another and interact well. The safety team is meeting towards the end of each month, so we do have members of the crisis response team that are on the safety team so that we can make sure that they're continuing to merge well. The crisis response plan is also considered an appendix underneath the district's safety plan. It just kind of makes sense for that to be under one umbrella. And you know, like Chris said, the crisis response plan has been a working document since two thousand fourteen. It was board approved back in two thousand fifteen. And we've been meeting pretty regularly ever since then, at least once or twice a year just to update the plan and you know, like you said with COVID, you know, we we didn't update it as well as we could have during that year and a half, but now we're back at it.
All right. Our general purpose of this plan, basically, how do we have a singular approach to addressing a crisis? Well, when that happens, we have to go through each of them to determine what the level of crisis is and then determine which individuals and which buildings may be affected most. However, in cases where an unexpected crisis arises, something that we had not thought of previously within the plan. That's where we consider it a fluid document where we can jump back in, add a new section with pertinent details in order to how to address that. Hopefully crisis doesn't occur in the future, but if it does, we're prepared in that case. As Chris just mentioned, that cycle of reviewing it on average, once per year, we want to build this up. And kind of have a tag along with the building safety team to review this information, even just logistical ideas. If there's changes in phone numbers, just constantly updating this information and having that roll through that in that case. If we do need it, that document is live, it is ready to go. And there are no questions asked. We're not searching for new phone numbers and things like that. So mitigating logistical issues to increase the monitoring, naturally go to providing that stress, that that crisis response.
So the definition of a crisis that the team put together back in two thousand fourteen, and I feel like we've stuck pretty solid to that same definition despite what issue has come up thus far, is really a significant incident or accident that affects multiple students or staff throughout the district. So prior to COVID, we did enact this plan for a couple of community members that had passed away that affected a widespread of students and families as well as staff. We also enacted the plan with a car accident and there was another accident that happened during some really poor weather that we had to enact the plan as well prior to COVID, so.
All right. So now what do we say, what types of crises can we deploy this plan for? As mentioned before, tragedy, traumatic incident or accident, or in the case of lockdown, we need for the team to try supports. So that's kind of that layer where we go back to the safety plan. We have to address the needs of the safety plan first. Because ideally you need to identify those areas that may have been affected through the safety plan in order to then have the locations determined to then gather as a safety team. So that's kind of that overlap. We have those communications continually working together to ensure that we can provide these services in a timely manner. And determine the reach of the crisis. Is it a specific building? Is it a specific classroom? Do we want to look at, you know, reaching out to everybody the same? So initially you bring it with the same approach, but then you fine tune it and narrow it down, kind of like how Sandra's MTSS model was. You have that universal support where you initially screen everything and then you whittle it down, identify the key individuals affected and then provide those specifics.
And we we are working with Mr. Haley and Mrs. Dudak to be able to have business cards printed out for staff members to be able to put right in their wallet. A magnet to put on their fridge that has that information and contact information. As well as creating a sticker to put on the back of the flip safety charts that have been put in place. So initial steps in the crisis response team, we just want to give you an overall kind of view of what the plan is. So the administrator or staff would notify the crisis response team leaders, which would be myself or Chris, Chris or Chris. At that point, we would then discuss the incident or accident and make a determination on whether it fits the deployment of that team and to the level that we have to contact and reach out to the superintendent or assistant superintendent. At that point, once we reach out and we're told, yep, go ahead and deploy your team. That's where we would do the initiate the building phone tree. The superintendent or acting superintendent or assistant superintendent would then enact the administrator phone tree. You know, the additional phone tree is that includes local entities. That really is depending on what the situation is and who it involves and how far reach that is.
All right. So steps, once the crisis team meets, basically get all that information out, review the situation that had happened, make sure there's a singular definition of the crisis event, so that way you can reduce the amount of rumor infiltration and other things that might impact the direction that we would go. So identify key rules, key roles, identifying all pertinent communication within and outside the district. Because if the case is, it is a community member that happens to be involved in several other agencies, then that branches out a whole batch of questions, correct? Identify the impacted students, families, extended families and staff. So that's where we really rely on our technological resources through Power School. Making sure that all of our registration information has, you know, appropriate family members within there. Almost think of it like as I said, you know, example, if we all had a master account to ancestor dot com where you can see this person's a cousin of that person, we know they they were friends back in high school, they lived on the same road, who are their nearest contacts? That's kind of how the discussions go. Trying to reach out, find any individual affected person that we may think. That's kind of that tier two, tier one approach. Tier two might be we identify them that they are a friend, but you know, perhaps they haven't been in contact in some time. So we start to ask more questions. The deeper you go, the more questions you ask. Identify location for in-house community help center. In our case, as a building, there was a emergency crisis within this building, saying that we're no longer able to meet and say the LGI. We do have off-district locations such as St. Pat's. You know, using prospect versus the high school, you know, things such as like the youth center and other community supports. So just having all those that are on retrieval.
All right. So the next slide, this this kind of describes what the next slide is going to be that Chris is going to go over, but we basically have four columns in the command that really lay out the step-by-step process for the following team members, for the superintendent, the lead administrator, the crisis response team members and the teacher. So that way everybody is very clear on what their role is, what the expectation is. It's 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 pretty well laid out. Please note that a lot of the steps are occurring at the same time, which is part of what our chart will show.
Yeah. And this is one area that I feel like will be the continual part where we do modify and change. There are many steps at this time, not necessarily everybody having a role during those steps. But if we were looking at this chart here horizontally, there are thirty-two levels. So there's different times where nobody's, they're kind of waiting on the next pin to drop before they go on to the next step. But that chart outlines that. And for example, we meet in that morning, so I have different color folders out based on which member of the team you are. And that way we can quick say, we need a substitute, somebody to come in. Hey, you're in folder. This is kind of the way it's laid out. This is where the responsibility guide, the checklist on the right side of the page here. Basically give some accountability for ourselves, be sure that we're each, that we're tailoring our intervention to the immediate need. So say, for example, you complete step one, you noted here, you're waiting for your next direction. As the superintendent and teachers go through their role as a crisis team. So basically this is going to be extrapolated through all the four stages. You're going to see the similar checklist. But in a way it does give us some accountability because it's part of the plan that we newly introduced. There's going to be the superintendent's review, which is within five days of a crisis event. The team will come together and identify strengths, weaknesses, things that we can, you know, modify with the plan going forward. So you know, that does give us some sense of returning that back to let everybody else know where we're at, because if there's additional resources that may be needed. That needs to be communicated quickly.
And a copy of those superintendent reviews would also be given to Dr. Bieler and to Mrs. Chichi so that they can review that and give us feedback as well because I mean, it's a fluid kind of document and you know, in every situation, there's going to be things that arise that we have to be able to be flexible and be able to change at the drop of a hat. So we're open to that too. So. All right. So it was important to us that this plan maintained a trauma-focused approach. So when we talk about the debriefing meeting, that's really bringing all of the team members together. And the team for the crisis response team really is made up of the social workers, the counselors, the school nurses, the SROs, Ms. Quinn. So we really pulled in the people that we thought would be integral in each building as long as, as well as for the administrators. So that's kind of where that debriefing meeting would happen and we would go over the superintendent's review form there and be able to add information there to be able to pass on as well. Assistance with resource support, you know, really looking at what is available for future support for families. Because even though in our building, you know, we may meet for one or two or three days that we're deployed and we're there setting up shop for families to be able to come in and setting up help centers. You know, crisis and trauma doesn't end after three days for families when something happens. So really being able to implement those additional supports for families to know what their outfits are and what their options are. And then our last one that we thought was really important is the restorative circle to provide a debriefing for the crisis team. You know, your crisis team are the members that are on the ground running through the whole crisis situation. So when that is over, there has to be a debriefing in an outlet for those supports as well. So we really wanted to look at, I'm looking at our restorative practices district team, which would be Corinne Quinn, Lacy Hill and Katie Rogers. Being able to come in and hold circle, restorative circles with the team. If they are affected with the crisis as well and involved in that whole process, then we'll be looking at outside sources and talking maybe with Catherine Child to see if, you know, who else would be able to come in. And sometimes it could be a situation that only prospect is affected. So Katie wouldn't run that circle, but maybe Corinne could come over or Lacy could come over. Or pulling those additional supports, supports in the district too, if needed. So.
And to kind of close, going back to that trauma-focused approach. Ultimately, everything in a crisis situation, time is the essence to reducing the likelihood of acute stress disorder, PTSD. And from the minute we are informed every day, that likelihood that when they're not identified, that increases the likelihood of those two possibilities happening. So in the essence of, you know, making sure everybody's accounted for, the ultimate respect is to come back to the building and make sure that we're providing those supports in whatever way possible. So going back to the MPSS plan. Ensuring that those students are identified and then identifying what level of support they need. So overall, our approach, I think with our plan, sets a good, you know, a good foot forward. Largely to just keep everybody on the same page that you identified singular chain of command. To ultimately return students to successful learning.
Absolutely. And after you read the whole document, you know, we are absolutely open anytime, you know, reach out, we can sit down with you individually or as a group and, you know, answer any questions because it is, it is kind of a taxing document. I mean, it's twenty something pages long, so it's a lot. It just takes all of this and really breaks it down further. So if anybody has any questions, we're willing to meet with you and and we do want to, you know, thank the Board of Education and Administration, but also Mr. Haley and Mrs. Dudak for really putting some time in a meeting with us to bring this back to the forefront. And Ms. Seaver, I think you were one of the original ones back in two thousand fourteen that helped us get it up and, you know, so we just wanted to thank everybody for being supportive and understanding that this really needs to be in the forefront.
Next, we need a motion to go into executive session, which is going to be very long. Okay. With the purpose, as I know, I have to say that. So motion by Brad. Second, Gary. On favor, I oppose staying motion Gary. And we will. We'll probably go on library.
Yes, you can go into the library for executive session and Mr. Finn will join you as well. Yes, you can go into the library for executive session and Mr. Finn will join you as well.
One minute ago.
I, I, I put it in.
You guys.
I know, but Bart would disagree with you.
I would.
He told everyone else to go home.
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay.
I'll be in at seven twenty-six, I guess.
Yeah. Okay. Communications? Say no on that. Simple office message, so who went first, Karen?
Karen. It was funny today, I felt like I should be answering the phone. Hello, this is Bluebird Coach Lines. I had three schools call today to find out if they could rent our activity buses.
Really?
Insane. One is to take their kids from their school to Buffalo Airport in April. Two of them are for teams that have playoffs in Long Island this weekend.
Are coach buses they want? Let's say Salamaca.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But one of them.
You can get our grand up.
Yeah. One of them called back and said that they found, actually Orchard Park has some too. So they were gonna rent Orchard Park, but we're still in talks with Fillmore to find out if they want to. We need to come up with drivers to take them to Long Island this weekend, so. That's what I was doing today.
Okay.
Other than that, same old, same old.
All right. This is G N E G.
Today we had a superintendent's day all day and honey's not here, honey gathered feedback from all the staff and created a schedule of learning opportunities that met basically everybody's needs in the district. Some highlights of the day, some, some teachers were curriculum mapping, some were doing CHAMP's training with, by the way, long behavior interventions with Kim Spillane. Dr. Beeler, he offered implicit bias training to all of our moderators, our, our aides, our support staff, our bus drivers. So he did all the non-instructional stuff, there were implicit bias and vice versa of that, that wasn't either an AM or PM session. When they left him, they went to a restorative practices session to learn about shorter practices. And then, let's see, yesterday Erin Berry and Kim Oaks and I visited the Faithkeeper School. It was fascinating, I enjoyed every single minute of it and thank you to Autumn. And let's see, Lindsay Scranks, I just wanna give kudos to her, she's got E-DUP, which is our extended day enrichment program up and running for grades four through seven. And a thank you to Nikki Beaver who did something very similar for Prospect Elementary and will be running something called Power Hour. It's reestablished before the pandemic. That will include homework help, math, reading, and eventually some pubs at the elementary level. And lastly, I just wanna say thank you for letting me attend Plaza Conference, I learned how to fly a drone.
Did you? Are you certified?
I'm not certified. Baby steps.
Baby steps to the right.
Thank you.
And move on to the board's message, whoop, you wanna start?
Nope.
Okay.
All right, here we go. No, I would just, when those students came, that's what life's all about. Playing simple, we thought about the seventh generation, that was a leadership, you know, component or initiative. It just felt really good to see that, you know. It's, it's so funny, they were so nervous.
Yeah.
They were doing such wonderful things and then they were talking about like the food drive and the different initiatives. And again, that's where I was telling you stories about Indian, Leon Chen and Boi used to say that. Say, and it wasn't just Indian. And you see, see somebody that's hungry, eat them, you know. And we had that happen here with the nonprofit two years ago, Barney Clark's game. It's like there's a lot of people walking around celebrating that they're hungry. And he left, you know, because I'm like, okay, I guess I gotta do something. So we came up with that soup and biscuit point means is that I'll, I'll make the commitment to help them instead of. That there's no reason for people to be hungry. Very proud of that. And then later when she, the MPSS, it was the idea she mentioned or use the word hope. That's powerful, because we can't ever take hope from people. So it's always, when we're, when we're here, it's always so, I'm so proud of all, everyone. And we wish those that were here. Every battling way, doing their best, you know. Proud to sit here with them.
Thank you. Okay.
Now, on that student things and things, I just wanted to congratulate all the, all the coaches and the athletes. I mean, all sports are pretty much wrapping up. Everybody, there's a lot of accolades individually and team wise and stuff like that, it's just no matter when you're first in the state or you do your best, it's just good to see the involvement that everybody had and how the programs are going and the feedback from the community and all that all the way around. Yeah, the other thing was is just, well, a week ago or so, we, a group of us went to the NISBA conference out in Syracuse. Just wanted to do a shout out on that end. Lots of presentations, we were one of the few, the only one that had student representatives in one of the presentations and just Mr. Hubbard and the three kid delegate. Student delegate, just wanted to say, I was very impressed, a lot of people that I talked to afterward were very, very impressed with those students. Also with Mr. Hubbard's presentation and something to be proud of.
Brad?
I wanna congratulate all the leaders. Really wanted to. Also, same thing at the NISBA conference, of all the summers I went to our group, absolutely had the most favorable feedback and results. Who's just probably voting to not let that come to my district. It's pretty cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, likewise, I like to, you know, show, congrats to our, our student that was, was at the conference, they did a real nice job. I also wanna remind everybody it's election day, so get out there and vote, that's my, my public, public service task. For you today, polls, polls are open until night.
Eric.
Yeah, being a fellow politician, yeah, get out there and vote. You get down to it, that's what we are, yeah. No, I, you know, you guys actually stole a lot of the thunder, it was gonna mention, you know, congratulations to all our fall sports teams. You know, our football team, you know, had a unfortunate end to their season this weekend, but, you know, congratulations to everybody, you know. Everyone was doing great and it was great to see a lot of the Facebook posts, you know, our kids doing well throughout the fall season, you know, looking forward to the, the winter season. You know, and tonight, I wasn't sure who the kids were gonna be here, but, you know, looking at, you know, seasons, my girls lacrosse team that I do as a club sport. I think I had six of my players who were up here in front of us this morning, or this evening, and it was great to see them, so it was great to see that they're doing the, you know. Yeah, what can I say about NISBA? I was gonna bring that up too, you guys, you beat me to everything. Again, NISBA, it's, it's always a great conference we go to every single year, a lot of great seminars and sessions. The keynote speakers, they're, they're always on point. This year it was Marley Naitlin with her interpreter, that was, it was pretty awesome, that was pretty awesome to witness. They had a little different format this year than they've done in the past, typically they've had the keynote usually in the evening, it was different, it was first thing in the morning, but it was interesting. It was great to see our, our students did a wonderful job. Kudos to Mr. Hubbard, doing a great job out there with the presentation. Honestly, I think we probably could have gone another hour, but he was mindful of the time and the commitment, so I believe they cut it short even. Seriously, I seem like they could have talked a lot more. And just out there to all of our teachers and staff and everyone who's working so hard and diving right in right now, you know, great job. Great job to everybody, keep it up, you know, we're, we're what, one marking period in and moving on to the next. You know, keep up the good work and we're right here behind you all.
I also would like to say congratulations to the students. It's good to see our, our youth, the leadership that they're taking on. I know a lot of those faces, it's so funny when you, you see the kids come in and you, you recognize them and it's good that they're getting involved and they're getting involved at a young age. And that they're trying to be out there and make the difference. So I, I loved seeing that. And I wish I could have went to the NISBA conference and see our kids present and unfortunately I could not make it. So, but it's good to hear that, you know, we're represented well and that when we're going out there, we're making an impact, you know. I did have a chance to go to the football game on Saturday and actually my cousin came over and he coaches for Lancaster. And after the game, he said, man, you guys got a pretty big community following, don't you? And I said, yeah, we do, I said, you know, it doesn't matter what the sport is. I said, when these kids go on, I said, there's a big community that follows them and I said, you don't have to have kids in the sport. There's a lot, you look at those stands, you see people that just go, went out to see the game. And it's really great to see, and I said, it, it doesn't matter whether it's basketball, football, lacrosse, the, the plays. Whatever it is, this community comes out and supports, and so it's really great to see. And, and it's noticed by other people who are not in this community. And I think that's one of the things that just kinda makes us unique, that we do have that strong following and that we do wanna embrace our kids and always root for them and be there to cheer them on. So it is noticed, you know, by other people, so I think that's really great. And, you know, just like you talked about giving back, look, you know, when the Key Club does the Thanksgiving dinner. I mean, look at how many people come out and get together and sit down and be able to talk and when you see people that you haven't seen in a long time, because they wanna come out and see everybody. So it's just kudos to everybody that's involved with that, so I'll quit rambling. And I will turn it over to Dr. Beeler, whose voice we just wanna hear right now because he sounds so good.
Yeah, I'll make it quick. As mentioned, I also had the opportunity to represent Salamaca at both the New York State School Board Association and the National YZ Conference. In both cases, I think we really have a lot to be proud of. We had, as we heard, students present at the School Board Association, which was absolutely terrific. We had districts from across the state say that they were envious of the programs that we have in Salamaca. We're gonna ask them to come to an upcoming board meeting to summarize what their presentation was. Salamaca also presented at YZ, that was exceptionally well received by the entire team that was there. So I'd like to thank all of those individuals who attended those conferences. It takes a lot to be away from your families and to travel. And we just need to acknowledge and thank people for representing our district at various conferences. I also wanted to thank Dr. Simbridge, Ms. Morrison, and Mr. Myers and the students who we saw this evening for the thorough and well-done presentations. Thank you.
Awesome. All right, then we will move on to our consent agenda, so we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Carrie, second by Dale. Are there any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carry. All business, we have our policies, fifty-one, ten, fifty-one, thirty, fifty-two, twenty, fifty-five, twelve, fifty-five, seventy, and sixty-one, sixty-one. So we need a motion to approve those policies.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Ted, second by Flip. Are there any questions on any of the policies? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carry. Our new business, we have our capital project change orders and allowance disbursements. Our new business, we have our capital project change orders and allowance dispersments. So we need a motion to approve the change orders and allow us just dispersments.
Motion. Second.
Who said Ted? Ted and Brad. Trying to write. Good motion by Ted, second by Brad. All in favor?
I.
I opposed, abstain, motion carry. And next is our consulting agreement with Terra County Consultants. So we need a motion to approve the consultant agreement for phase three point three, three point four, and four point oh. Motion. Motion by Dale.
Second.
Second by Carrie. Are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
I opposed, abstain, motion carry. And I can see is our consulting agreement with Discipline Associates with effective date of November ninth, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. So we need a motion to approve that consulting agreement.
Motion.
Motion by Brad.
Second.
Second by Ted. Are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
I opposed, abstain, motion carry. Item D is our surplus items, so we need a motion to declare the items listed in the attachments as surplus.
Motion.
Motion by Flip.
Second.
Second by Carrie. Are there any questions on any of the items? All in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstain, motion carry. Our credit card authorization for Mrs. Giannici, so we need a motion to approve the authorization for credit card.
Motion.
Motion by Ted.
Second.
Second by Dale. Are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
I opposed, abstain, motion carry. Item F is the creation of a position of a new substitute food service helper. So we need a motion to approve creating that position.
Motion.
I'm sorry, five positions.
Yeah.
So motion by Dale, second by Brad. All, any questions? All in favor?
I.
I opposed, abstain, motion carry. Item G is our certification for uncollected school taxes and our tax collector's report. So we need a motion to approve the certification and the report.
Motion.
Motion by Dale.
Second.
Second by Flip. Are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
I opposed, abstain, motion carry. Item ten is our personnel consent agenda. So we need a motion to approve the personnel consent agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Ted.
Second.
Second by Carrie. Are there any questions on any of the appointment or resignation? All in favor?
I.
I opposed, abstain, motion carry. And do we have anybody that we need to introduce?
I do not believe that we do. I do just wanna congratulate Bill Fraser, he's been with us for a long time. He's being appointed as a probationary senior automotive mechanic after taking the test and then waiting seven months for results. So that's exciting for him, as well as to welcome former student Dylan Alman, who will be working for us as a cleaner.
Awesome. Thank you. Item eleven is our board information and reports. We had our policies, our transportation report, our upcoming events, which Mark already went over. And our next, let's see, Board of Education meeting will be November twenty-second, so. With that, we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion second.
Boy, motion by Dale, second by Carrie, all in favor? Third by Flip. All in favor?
I.
I opposed, abstain, motion carry. Thank you, everybody, for coming and for those that stayed, we do have to sign the tax warrant.